Order. Roll call.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, September 20th, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Rozinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.
All right. We'd stand for a moment's meditation.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you first of all grateful and thankful that you have assembled us in these chambers today. We ask that you help us make good and prudent decisions on behalf of the residents of the city of Erie. We ask that you comfort all those who are in mourning and that you just have, just come down and help those who are in need. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to your honor for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I have a motion to accept the minutes from the September 6th city council meeting and bills for payment on September 22nd, 29th, and October 6th, 2025. Mr. Rozinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. If we could have Gerald Johnson come up?
I hope everyone could hear me.
You want to use this?
No, I'll just call.
Gerald's team won first place in the Bayview Summer League, the Bayview Park Division, for 13 and 14-year-olds, and he also has won the Heart of a Lion Award.
Each year, I present the Heart of a Lion Award, and I explain to the young men and ladies that the heart of a lion considered the king of the jungle. He's a leader, and this is what this young man did. When his team was down, he didn't holler at them, he encouraged his players. That is wrestling. When his team was in trouble, he took control. Now, some of his team members thought he shot too much, but he had the highest average, and they won. No problem, no argument. You know, every time the ref made a call on him, he didn't say anything, but you know, he got that look. The ref said, "Yeah, you got it, you got it." You said, "Yeah, okay." But the key is, he has the heart of a lion. He never gave up when his team was down. His team took first place. We gave him this that he deserved, okay? But also, a crystal trophy of the heart of a lion. And I wanted to present this to him in public to let you know that it's a young man like this that makes the league work. It's not me. The league is a man. This young man and this team and others make it happen. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, sir.
Congratulations.
What's your last name again?
Gerald Johnson.
Johnson.
Good job. Nice start.
Super. Now, that was Bayview. We have another young man. Mikey. Where's Mikey? Mikey played on East 19th Street. What's up, big guy? All you hear, especially in the championship game, from the coach, from the fans, "Mikey, Mikey! Throw the ball, Mikey! Get on defense, Mikey! You gotta hustle, Mikey! Shoot the ball, Mikey! Mikey, Mikey!" Now, I'm looking for Michael Jordan. This young man hustled, never stopped running. Defense. He stole a lot of balls, very good shooter, lot of heart. Bigger guys lock him down, he got up, and he came back in. I think he's got something that no man would do, yeah? But, Mikey, I want to thank you for playing, and I appreciate it. As I said, Mr. Johnson, it's you and your team that make the league happen. Without you, it wouldn't happen. You have the heart of a lion. You are a leader. You are a player. You are a hustler. Never give that up. The heart of a lion.
Rozick? Okay.
Do we have anyone here for repository sales? Do we have anyone here for repository sales? All right, with that, we are open for public comments. The public has five minutes to address city council. If you would provide your name, and for the time being until we address the rules of council, if you could address your municipality of residence. I do not intend to enforce the address for the time being until council votes on it.
My name's Freda Tepfer. I live in Erie, and I'm wearing my Judy Human shirt tonight. It says, "If you don't demand what you believe in for yourself, you're not going to get it." Judy Human, recently deceased, the mother of the Americans for Disability Act. So, I did check on my way here tonight, and the city, after numerous complaints by me, did fix the way the notification of sidewalk closures at the southwest corner of West 10th and State was being handled, and also the closure along State, the sidewalk closures. They didn't do it because they did it, they did it because I complained to them. I took pictures, and I made phone calls several times, and I went back a second time, and it still wasn't fixed, and it's still not exactly right. But, and I know there's an ordinance in the works, the thing is, the city, it's their project, and I know I asked ahead of time, "How are you going to manage sidewalk closures?" Apparently, there was no plan. The Erie Downtown Development Corporation, on their own, also the Warner Theater and Richford Arms, made some decisions to put in sidewalk bypasses when they did their work. They were not required by an ordinance. The city can do the very same thing. They don't need an ordinance to do that. On West 10th, between Peach and State, they could have a bypass sidewalk. On State Street, where the sidewalk is closed, they could have a bypass and forego some of the parking. It's possible. I saw a guy tonight with a walker trying to negotiate the closed sidewalks and the crossing. When I saw the people there, the workers there on Monday, he said, "Don't you have anything better to do with your time?" And I said, "This is one of the things I do with my time." And I said, "Do you have any blind friends?" Because he thought, "There's no reason they should put the sign over the corner at Peach Street because anybody could see the sidewalk was closed." I did not know. So, city, please do pass an ordinance, but you do not need to wait. If you're going to do something like this, you can provide a sidewalk bypass. Also, if you're going to put notices out that say there's going to be street closures for milling, and it's your own project, and you're going to close the sidewalk, don't you think you could also put out those notices in social media of sidewalk closures, especially downtown? Yep. Okay. The landlord-tenant ordinance. When I moved here in 2011 from Alaska, and I rented a place by distance, looking at pictures online and negotiating with the landlord, and I came in, found out that not all the windows had screens on them, some of them didn't open, there were some other issues, and I raised those with the landlord, and basically, she threw me out. She threw me out, so within 10 days, I had to be out and start my job, I had to be out, I had to find, I had to pay to have my materials moved. It took me a long time to get only three parts of my money that I put down, out, back. She cheated me out of $625. The point is, I didn't have no protection from some kind of a just cause eviction. She just decided I was going to be too much trouble, so she wanted me out of there and showed me how, in the regulations, it was legal to do that. So, I was lucky enough to find another place, which was not ideal either. In the wintertime, I was the only one living there. There was nobody below me in a two-story place, and apparently wasn't heat on, and it was, I'm surprised my pipes didn't freeze. I have friends who live in moldy apartments, who have children and who have issues, and people should not be afraid to complain about the conditions in their apartment because they're afraid they're going to be thrown out. But this is something, it is a fear that people who are renting have, and we don't want our landlords to neglect their buildings, we don't want them to become condemned, we don't want them to be torn down. We want them to be maintained, we want them to be preserved. I think a tenant-landlord ordinance is way past due in this town.
Thank you, Freda.
Thank you, Freda.
Jesse Tate, 501 Poplar Street, Erie PA 16507. I'm piggybacking off what this lady said about this ordinance. It is long overdue. Right now, I was here last week, right now, I'm fighting an illegal eviction. The landlord still, the landlord changed the locks, refused to fix the water in the sink, and blocked my fire exit coming out of my apartment, and nothing's done about it. The lease, again, is binding for both individuals. I don't feel like that because I'm an African-American, I'm the only one being evicted out of the apartments, but everybody else gets a new lease, and also, the violations, the lease protects both of us, at least I thought, but it's in the landlord's favor. And I just think it's totally unfair that ordinance is way past due. I'm fighting this landlord and in court in appeals, and I shouldn't have to. I've been at this property for 17 years, never had any issues, never been behind on any rent or anything of that nature. My previous landlord sells it to him, tells him he wants everybody to stay intact, and he only evicts me. He sells it on the 2/28 of 22, and they put an eviction notice on my door on the 1st of March, and just says, "Go," not knowing my predicament, and not giving me just cause, but everybody else gets to stay? I think that's so unfair, and I think that you guys should pass that ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amberato, and I'm from Erie. As all of you have known, I've already been here probably the past couple weeks, just presenting my reasoning behind why the current city ordinance needs to change in regards to backyard chickens being allowed within the city limits. Rather than any further arguments or signatures continued for the petitions that I've already handed out to all of you, I guess I just have an inquiry. What are the next steps? What can myself and my husband, who's present here with me tonight, expect with the possible changing or passing of this ordinance? And when can we possibly see change or be allowed to move our chickens back to our residency?
We're not able to respond to questions. We do that during our committee reports at the end, which gives you a little bit of time in between.
Okay.
We'll have legislation this year.
Okay.
We'll see if it gets voted up or down, and what gets written into it. It's in process.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Kim Hobson. That's spelled H-O-B-S-O-N. I reside at 346 East 23rd Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. I am here standing on behalf of myself and also my mother, who is 89 years old with dementia. I'm here against chickens in the city. Because we have a neighbor right now who I am constantly, with chickens, rooster, going off all time of day, morning and evening. I can get up at 2 o'clock in the morning to see after my mom, and the rooster is going off. They have now moved into our yard. My mother is one that loved her yard and took very care of her property, so now I'm standing in for her. These chickens and roosters have come over there, we have chased them away, I have talked to the landlord, and I've expressed to him he needs to keep them caged up, but I'm against having the chickens and roosters in the city. We, what's next? If you allow this, then what is next? Someone's going to stand up and say, "I want a pig, I want a cow, I want a horse, I want a monkey." But are we going to continuously to allow these things? And then you might have a neighbor who does not like them like myself, but who's not as calm as I am, and you might get into fighting, you might see slain chickens everywhere. What is next? We should not allow, we have an ordinance in place right now. I have called the city. I have called numerous people who are supposed to, you know, stand by these ordinance, have not received any help. So, this is why I am here today, to say, "Let's enforce what we have and do not change the ordinance." We have children who walk the streets. I have a UPS guy who said he was chased and puked by a chicken, not in my area, but in other areas of the city. There's been told that there's numerous chickens all around the city. The noise level is going to be out of control, the smell is going to be out of control, we have enough rodents right now who is running in the streets because of, not even because of chickens, because vegetable gardens are all around the city also. We have some right on the 23rd Parade not being taken care of, we have another one on 22nd and Parade. How many more vegetable gardens do we need that even though people who locally, that lives right by them, are not allowed to take parking them? So, I'm standing again against this ordinance of trying to change it for chickens in the city. We're in the city, we're not in the country. We're in the city, and we're trying to beautify our city, but by having chickens in the city, absolutely not. That is my stance on that, and I appreciate that you always allow that to stand and also enforce it. So, what do I have to do? I've called the police, I've called animal enforcement, and like I said, I've also talked to the neighbor. They actually said, like, they don't understand what I'm saying, but yeah, I believe they do. But I tried to call him over to see what damage the rooster-chickens did to my mom's yard. He would not come over, so I'm upset about that. I am so. This is why I'm here right now, on behalf of my mother and also myself, because we take pride in our yard, and we want to keep it like that. We don't want chickens, we don't want roosters to tear it up. I know there shouldn't, if you have an ordinance in place, you put that and change that ordinance, then we're going to have a whole mess here in this city. So, are we going to be called the city, or are we going to be called the country? So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time, and I have to go to take care of my mom. Thank you.
My name is Tom Sherritt. I came to Erie in 2010. The best thing I can do to encourage you to enact the landlord-tenant proposed ordinance is to share some experience of mine with you. A few years ago, I moved into a shared housing, a shared house with some other roommates. After a time, and I signed a year lease, after a time, the landlord began to post frivolous rules, like, you know, "Don't sleep on the couch," and "No guests at all," and things like that, that were not in the lease. I didn't sign for that. They weren't in the contract. And he began putting up cameras everywhere, in the kitchen, in the dining room, in the living room, on the stairway, in the hallway upstairs, and he would watch at home, which is totally crazy. I complained about it enough, he posted the 10-day notice, and I didn't think too much about clearing out of there. More recently, I had, to make a long story short, I was in an accident right before New Year's. I ended up in a nursing home in Beaver, Pennsylvania, and I wanted to come back to Erie, so I got online and put a deposit on a place here in Erie, sight unseen. It turned out to be a very bad place. Again, it was a rooming house. This time, the way the landlord had divided up the second floor, I don't know about zoning laws in Erie, but I know that only one person was successful in getting a rent rebate because that was supposed to be one unit. Nevertheless, I had been promised some rental assistance from St. Martin's for two months of rent, and at the very last minute, they pulled out, which was a financial setback for me. I was not able to make the rent on the 1st of the month, on the 1st of the month. The landlord showed up with the 10-day notice on my door. A couple of days later, a constable came over and served me with the notice of a hearing in front of a magistrate. I could not attend the hearing because I had a conflicting medical appointment, but I waited to see what the outcome of that would be. I was never served with a final notice. I did not get a letter explaining what had happened in court that day. I had to take the landlord's word for it. He said, "You need to be out by the last day of the month," and so I left. And now, I am in the homeless shelter at the overnight program at the city mission. That was awful quick for an eviction. I haven't called the court yet to find out what really happened at that meeting, at that hearing, but I would encourage you to vote in favor of the landlord-tenant ordinance. There are clearly some landlords in this city that are out of control completely and have no respect for people's privacy, or even missing one rental payment. Of course, another thing about where I was staying at this last time was that when I missed the 1st of the month, every week thereafter added $100 to that bill. I live on $900 a month of SSI, and I could see that this would dig a hole much deeper than what I would be able to get out of. And so, I cleared out of there. I'm looking at a place on Friday that will hopefully be okay, and if it is, I'll be very lucky because all of the rentals that I have looked at are extremely high in price and/or they're just pathetic buildings. So, I would ask for your vote in favor of the ordinance, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
How are you doing, city council? My name is Floyd Duck, Tree for Short. I'm here today to talk about a problem that I'm...
Where are you from?
I was going to say, why?
Are you from the city? Where are you from?
Yeah, I'm from Erie.
Thanks.
All right. I'm here to talk to you about a problem that I'm going through, but basically, it seems like everybody else is going through. My current landlord has harassed me and my family to get out of the property after five years. With the rates of rent going sky-high, he figured out he can get me out the house, move somebody else in, get first-month rent, deposit, last-month rent, and more than likely, move foreigners in so you could get you some government assistance, vouchers, credit, and many other government funding programs, which will benefit him financially. See, let me explain. See, the public, we going through a crisis that you see every day on the news, with the gas prices going up, the food prices going up, clothing bills, inflation is up. The cost of living is skyrocketing, but my pay is stagnant. And to make matters worse, every few days, one of us, even you, you walk into your local country fair, you look at the headlines in the newspaper, "Erie received $20 million for this program, $40 million for this program, $120 million for this program." We turn around and look for things like, "How do I get involved?" I'm not asking for a million. I'm not asking for rental assistance. I'm not asking for any of that at all. I don't need financial money because I work hard, I'm working two jobs. I'm not asking for the money, but I see the certain people, they're asking for some help, 600, 300, 400. Didn't we just receive $1.2 billion from the ERAP? You thank the governor, and you thank the president. Personally, Mr. Mayor, I seen it. I did a little bit of research. I'm sorry about that, sir. I don't mean to put you on blast. My landlord situation is a little more delicate, it's a little personal. I currently work third shift overnight, and on many occasions, my wife will call me at work and say, "I heard something in the basement." I would always make it all, "A cat or mouse snuck into the basement." It was my landlord, 1 o'clock, 3 o'clock, and it just happened, it happened more than once, but I have no proof that it was him. And to the other day, when he texts my wife and said, "Move those two boxes out the basement." When I moved into this house five years ago, my landlord came to the house when I moved in. He hasn't been in that house, to my knowledge, in five years. How did you know it was two TV boxes in the basement? Why are you waiting for 1 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 3 o'clock in the morning to creep around the basement? Now, when I talk to other people in my family... Now, when I talk to other people in my family, oh, I would have shot him, I would have did this. Then I would be upstairs on 18th Street, it'd be a whole different conversation I'm having here. Basically, I'm going through some things and it's personal, and I understand what everybody else is saying about the landlord situation. Me and my wife been looking for a house so far this month. Today is the 20th. We spent $480 on these rental-
Rental applications.
Applications. You'll find a house, you'll call the number, they'll say, oh, you sound great. You make how much a month? Come on in, fill out an application. $40. And you never hear from them again. You call two, three days later, oh, no, we're looking at someone else. You ride by there next week, the house is still there. We spent close to $500 so far this month. And if I was a landlord, I don't knock nobody's hustle, I do not mind how you eat, I do not mind it. You could sit at home and literally get your rent per month just off application fees. Just post it on Facebook Marketplace and just say, my house is for rent, and every single person who likes your house will give you 40 bucks. Every single person, say you get 10 this week, 7 next week, 8 the following week, the fourth week you only getting 5. You're close to $2,000 for a home that you didn't even rent out. You didn't even fix the doors or nothing, you didn't even open the door. You grabbed a piece of paper from a person, took the 40 and threw the paper in the trash. We going through it back here. And I am not saying that you guys are not going through it at all. I don't know your lives personally, I know that we all have personal problems. But I kind of, I'm kind of leaning on you guys to say, can you remember before you sat here, what you were going through, what your mother was going through, what your brothers, your sister, your friend, before you made it to where you were? Can you kind of remember that? And that's us, we're still back there. Just kind of, I'm not saying that you're not doing your job or anything. I love the city council, I love what you guys do around town, I love my mayor. I got a beautiful mayor, he does the best that he can for every single resident that he can. But I do know that once you're hungry to become a mayor, and I'm a mayor, and I eat, that hunger kind of dies. When you're running for city council, before you were city council, oh, when I get there, I'm gonna do this for the little man, I'm gonna do that, now that you're there, eh, I'm gonna try. You went from I'm gonna do to I'm gonna try. And if I can't, too bad, I gotta pick my daughter up for soccer practice. And I completely understand all that. And I hate to be kind of loud or whatever, but right now, what I'm going through with the landlord is deadly. I'm not here asking for money, I'm sorry about the chickens. I understand what she say about no chickens. And I definitely feel sorry for my man that's being put out and living in a homeless shelter. That's bad, that's bad, that hurts your pride as a man. But all I'm saying is, my name is Floyd Duck, and I'm here today, took my time out before going back to work, looking for a four-bedroom apartment. If anyone, a house, not an apartment, a house. I can afford, say, 14, 15 hundred dollars a month, but please don't take the 40 and then rip it up. I work two jobs, my wife work, I'm an army vet, my daughter receives down syndrome, well, social security check, but I can afford the rent, even if it's rent to own, which would be better. That's what I'm here asking, you know, try not to forget me when you go home tonight and turn on your TV and flick your channels, let me ring a bell in your mind. Hey, it's a guy down here, he's looking for a house, that's all he looking for. Looking for a fair share. I'm gonna work for mine, I don't want government assistance, food stamps and all that. That's Tom?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry to take up that much time. You guys enjoy your day. Thank you for listening to me. Floyd Duck, I need a four-bedroom apartment, I'm on Facebook, I talked to you already in another council meeting. Enjoy your day, bye. Pleasure seeing you, Mr. Mayor. Good luck to everybody, wish you all the best.
Good evening, Council. My name is Erin Meisner. My address is 321 Blackstone Drive, 16505, but I'm currently in the process of moving into the city. I want to touch briefly on the Erie rental housing ordinance that's being drafted. I'm speaking out here tonight because I'm afraid of losing my housing. Every day, my housing is precarious because I don't own the home I live in. If I'm worried, I'm sure that there are plenty of other people like me. I'm disabled and I live on a fixed income and finding affordable, accessible housing in the city is so difficult. It took me nine months of looking to find an apartment that met my needs. When I thought about coming here today, I was nervous about sharing any experience I've ever had with the landlord. Perhaps my current or a potential future landlord is watching this and may try to retaliate against me for speaking out tonight. I even hesitated to speak because I had to share my address. I'm giving away who my landlord is to all of you and anybody who wants to look it up. But that's kind of the point, right? There's always going to be a power imbalance as long as there are landlords and tenants. I'm aware of the argument that the Fair Housing Act and the Pennsylvania landlord and tenant laws already provide protections, but they don't safeguard tenants from retaliation for exercising their rights. They don't insulate tenants from lease non-renewals because a landlord disagrees with the tenant's political views or feels they're problematic tenant simply because they're lawfully asking for repairs. Domestic violence survivors assaulted in their homes are not shielded if their landlords want them out through no fault of their own. Landlords can force people into homelessness for any reason or no reason at all. The proposed ordinance has the potential to spell out in detail the rights and obligation of tenants and landlords, which would make it easier for renters to seek redress against unfair housing practices. Everyone should have the opportunity to live in safe, secure housing, free of fear, and a just cause ordinance would help to ensure that that right extends to all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Martha Wachuku and I reside in the city of Erie, and I am here to support the proposal for the ordinance for the just cause eviction. I'm gonna start with listing out some stats for you. Right now, 48% of renters, 48% of people in Erie are renters. About 25% of us live below the federal poverty guidelines. From 2017 to 2022, we have seen about a 15% increase in the number of people who have experienced homelessness. Over the course of the pandemic and the last 10 years since the Great Recession, we have seen a major transfer of wealth from the working class to the upper owning classes. Just, this just cause ordinance is just the beginning of what we need to protect renters. I stand here before you as a 30-year-old millennial with the Gen Z's and the Gen Alphas after me. In the world that has been built for us, in the world that is being built for us, is a world where we will not afford not only our rents, but to afford to buy a house. Right now, I'm paying about 800 a month, which is affordable for me, but it's tight. And I'm sitting here, listening to everyone else talk about their experiences, and as an organizer, I have heard so many different kinds of stories from Erie and around the regions where landlords are abusing us as working-class people and we have no one to protect ourselves but us. And you are the people who are elected to represent us. You are supposed to be our barrier between the people who are only about themselves and the working class. So I'm calling upon you all to remember, if you don't feel connected to renters right now, remember that renters are your children, they're the people you employ, they're the people who are your neighbors. And right now, we are struggling between the cost of living inflation, between everything going on in their lives, we're begging for someone to take one iota of action to protect us. I've been here, coming here since I was maybe 24, talking about protecting renters, and now we're sitting in the beast of a belly. Private equity and big money are in our region buying up properties. I worked in Meville over the last couple of months, where there was a property bought by a corporation who owns 2,400 properties across the country, they raised rent on elders 40%. So that's what we're up against here. It's not just local landlords we're talking about right now. Erie is in the midst of big development, and you know that, we're watching the Avalon be built. They're talking about rent starting for a studio at $1,200 in Erie. What are we doing to make sure that we're making things cost-effective for us in the long run? We're sitting at the beginning of a crisis in Erie, but we're sitting in the seat of a housing crisis, crisis all over America. And I'm calling on all of you to really think about and protect all of us. I know that there are few of you up here who already have our interest at heart, but for those of you who don't, I really, really hope that you can stand with us renters. So that's all I have to say today. And I won't be able to stay, but I look forward to seeing your comment after. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Thank you. Moving on to ordinances for final passage.
Council file number 16379, official ordinance 542023, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $10,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. This is the federal forfeiture program. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file ordinance, bill number 16379, and now known as official file ordinance 542023, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance 542023 by yea seven nay zero. Council file number 16380, ordinance number 552023. Of the city council of the city of Erie, the city determining to incur lease rental debt evidenced by the guaranteed revenue bond and the maximum principal amount of $1,889,510 to be authorized and issued by Erie City Water Authority in connection with construction, alteration, and improvements to public water distribution facilities in and about this city, including but not limited to the lead service line replacement project, Phase 3, and paying related costs, fees, and expenses, specifying the realistic useful life of the project, authorizing and directing appropriate officers of the city to take certain actions and to execute certain documents, including a guarantee agreement between the city as guarantor and the Erie City Water Authority and the Pennsylvania Infrastructure Investment Authority, approving this form, maximum guaranteed amounts and sources of payment of the guarantee agreement, creating a sinking fund in connection with such guarantee obligations, and appointing a sinking fund depository, and providing for the repeal of all inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file ordinance, bill number 16380, and now known as official file ordinance 552023, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance 552023 by yea seven nay zero. Council file number 16381, official ordinance 562023, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $319,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof for the patrol and tactical equipment. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file ordinance, bill number 16381, and now known as official file ordinance 562023, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance 562023 by yea seven nay zero. Council file number 16382, official ordinance 572023, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $500,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue and providing for the expenditure thereof. Erie Youth Violence Prevention Grant, sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council bill, council file ordinance, bill number 16382, and now known as official file ordinance 572023, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance 572023 by yea seven nay zero. Council file number 16383, official ordinance 582023, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $91,272.72 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, contribution from FEMA AFG grant for an AED machine, thermal image camera, and two mobile repeaters. Sponsored by Ms. Faulkner, seconded by Mr. Brzezinski, the council file ordinance, bill number 16383, and now known as official file ordinance 582023, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass official file ordinance 582023 by yea seven nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council file number 16384, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $309,300 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, contribution is from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to be used for stormwater improvements at Garrison Run. Sponsored by Mr. Trup, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file ordinance, number 16384, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council pass and adopt council file ordinance 16384 by yea seven nay zero on first Council file number 16385, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $17,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, the contribution is from the hope to be used for parks improvement. Sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Trup, Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance, number 16385, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance, number 16385, by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16386, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,627,368.80 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of the 2023 Green Light Go funding program, West 18th Street Erie Signal Reconstruction Project. Sponsored by Mr. Trup, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance, number 16386, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance, number 16386, by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16387, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,332,319.4 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for the construction phase of the 2023 Green Light Go funding program, Erie Downtown State Street Traffic Upgrades Project. Sponsored by Mr. Trup, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance, number 16387, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance, 16387, by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16388, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $335,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from a community partnerships program grant administered by the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, the DCNR, and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Mr. Trup, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file ordinance, 16388, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, and Mr. Nelson. City council read and adopt council file ordinance, number 16388, by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16389, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $9,006 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from a coastal zone management grant administered by the Department of Environmental Protection, the Pennsylvania DEP, and providing for the expenditure thereof. Sponsored by Mr. Trup, seconded by Ms. Flores, the council file number 16389, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. City council read- City council read and adopt council file ordinance sixteen three eighty-nine by yea seven nay zero on first reading. This takes us to new business.
Move the balance. Mr. President.
Any separations? Based on our study session last week, I'm surprised nobody called for the tote board. All right. No separations? All right, call for the vote.
Moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Trup, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Nelson. Motion passes yea seven nay zero. Mr. President, this now takes us to committee reports.
What is it, left, yes, right now?
Everything's a little different. There's no consistency from button to button. I just gave a good look on Thursday. Well, no, no, I gotta clear it, and then I gotta...
My button don't work?
Yeah, I don't think our buttons are working.
No. Hey, you're still tied to there. It doesn't just go on. One of you hasn't voted yet, though. Maybe, maybe Ed's doesn't work.
Mine isn't working either.
You ready? Everyone said yes.
Yes.
Oh.
Witherspoon said no. Are we gonna have to document that?
You renegade.
This, this light bulb here is burnt out, then, 'cause, 'cause I thought you...
I guess we need to take advantage of the few toys we have.
Yeah, and one of you has yes is labeled red and no is labeled green, and I think that's confusing, too.
Oh, oh, I have a yes with an N, that's red.
All right. Y'all get some practice on this, on your own time.
Maybe council members will help themselves remember in the past.
Everybody's is different. All right, all right. Don't make me hit the gavel. We're on to committee reports, so I have a volunteer to go first. All right, thank you. We'll go that way and around. We'll finish with Keys.
I want to thank council and the mayor for allowing me to provide recreation services to the youth in the city of Erie. We also had some young men and young ladies from a couple of county areas. We had two that came just about every day from Oil City, I believe it was. The program itself has been going for quite a while, thirty-three years, and I hope to continue to do it long as, good Lord, give me good health. But those two young men were special. Just to watch them play, watch them take leadership of their team, and their team responded very positive to them as leaders. I don't know if they were considered captains or not, but they were leaders. And it wasn't just their age group. Our, our team, our coaches chose those two. I didn't choose them, the coaches chose them, based on their hustle, their leadership, and they deserved the Heart of the Lion Award. And I just hope they continue to be young leaders, not only on the court, but in school, in their community, in their churches. That's very, very important. On another note, Mr. President, that chicken ordinance, I am totally for, we need to, far as I'm concerned, we need to get chickens out of the city. You know, whether they weigh two hundred and fifty pounds or four hundred pounds, I don't care. Also, I have a problem with roosters. They, you know, I thought they croak six in the morning, but they croak all day long. And, you know, I did report it, and code enforcement did come out and cited the neighbor, but the neighbors still have the roosters. So, you know, I'm not sure what we can do other than writing the ordinance. You just gotta figure out how we're going to enforce any ordinance, and if we can enforce it, we don't need to have it on the books. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, not really a formal report today, but just wanna commend Mr. Witherspoon for thirty-three years of service to the community with kids. I think you deserve a Lion, Heart of the Lion Award yourself. You know, I've been working with kids for twenty-six years now, and when I first started, my beer was all black, and now it's all gray. And I've earned that, but Mr. Witherspoon takes the patience and a lot of patience to do what you do, so, and you've affected a lot of lives, so, thank you for what you've done. Thank you.
All right, so I wanna start first with addressing the housing ordinance. So, the press likes to jump the gun sometimes. This is not titled "The Just Cause Ordinance." It is the Erie Rental Housing Ordinance. It has three major tenants to it, or clauses to it. The first one is to protect tenants from retaliation when they request repairs, as we heard tonight. Also, Jasmine and I have been doing groundwork for about four months, talking to tenants who have been evicted when they have requested repairs, or when there has been code violations. I've also spoken with our code enforcement officers, and they have shared with me how often they have to essentially act as social workers when a property owner is cited, then they get evicted for that complaint. It is absolutely driving homelessness, it is absolutely driving housing insecurity. So that's the first clause of it. The second one is to ensure that survivors of domestic and sexual violence have equal access to safe housing. This is something where we do need to tighten up some of our local protections to ensure that survivors have speedy access to things like lock changes, that they don't get, become essentially doubly victimized for any damage that their abusers do to the home, things like that. Third, it protects tenants from being evicted for no fault of their own, essentially giving them things like a sixty-day notice on rent increases and laying out seven specific reasons that are good cause for eviction. If you do not pay your rent, if you do not bind by your lease agreement, you will be evicted. There's no stopping that. However, it lays out exactly the reasons for, that are good cause for being evicted. For example, if the property owner wants to do major renovations, or if there's been several nuisance complaints, things like that. So please, it is the Erie Rental Housing Ordinance. We will be hopefully finishing that up next week at the solicitors' meeting, with the hope, if possible, to have that submitted to be on the agenda for our October fourth meeting at nine a.m. So again, as I've been saying on repeat, if anyone has any input, my city cell and email are widely available on the city website, please reach out. It is still very much in draft form. Additionally, with my various committee responsibilities, I met with our chief of police and other police leadership two weeks ago. Always an interest to hear how the crisis car is going. It's going very well, lots of positive feedback on that. Last week, there were one thousand one hundred and twenty calls for service, and while we were on a good trajectory for having no shootings, unfortunately, there were two shootings last week. With the fire department, I visited three additional engine houses last week. The fire department has been so incredibly welcoming. I've gotten to see firsthand how neglected some of our firehouses are. One of the firehouses has a whole bay of windows that is, I believe, over sixty years old. It provides no insulation, it can damage their gear over time, which is very expensive gear, which is really concerning to me, so I will absolutely be keeping the fire department in my mind this budget season to ensure that those who keep us safe are better protected. Also attended the water board meeting last week. I wanna say congrats to CEO Paul Vojtak on his retirement after twenty years of service. He will be retiring this January, and to Craig Palmer, who was recently named his successor at the Water Authority. The sewer, I attended the board meeting this week. There's still troubleshooting, as I mentioned last meeting, there was a clean air violation. There's still troubleshooting one of the incinerators, but now the other one is in compliance, so it's not great news, but it's some progress, and staff believes that they will address the cadmium noncompliance in the very near future. I've got forty seconds left, so I'm gonna mention some good civic engagement things. As of yesterday, Governor Shapiro announced that Pennsylvania is now an automatic voter registration state, which is a fantastic thing, so when you are at the DMV, or when you are filing an address change, or getting a photo ID, or your license, anything, you will be automatically registered to vote. I believe we're joining twenty-two or twenty-three other states that have that. And then lastly, the Jefferson Educational Society and G CAC have launched a new program for young leaders, fourteen to twenty years old. Please contact Raven Clark at eight one four four five nine eight thousand for more information. Five minutes on the dot.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Yes, I am. Not a whole lot to talk about. Civic Center Authority meeting is tomorrow. Sea Wolves are also set to play tomorrow night. They're in the playoffs for the championship, of course. Those little Tigers are pretty tough. Mr. Trup stole all my thunder for Mr. Spoon, but he does deserve to be mentioned once again for the tremendous work he does with the kids. It's phenomenal. The other thing is, he's been on top of a mountain all by himself for a whole lot of years. He played for Ganon against Youngstown State, and they went six overtimes. And they won, if I remember. I was there, but it was so long ago. We won. He's making room for Cathedral Prep. I was out of town, so I didn't see the game, but Prep played six overtime games in football last Friday night. So now there's two guys on a mountain. Mr. Spoon is still the highest one, though. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Ms. Flores.
All right. I did have a blighted property committee meeting last Wednesday. I did not attend because I had a meeting with the solicitors and the president, but as of right now, we have two hundred and forty-four blighted properties on the list, and fifty-three of those properties are within the city of Erie limits. Nine new properties were added to that list as of last week's meeting, and we have a E M T A meeting this coming September twenty-fifth at four p.m. It's a Monday. You can register through Zoom. Both of these committees are done through Zoom, so if the community would like to participate, all you have to do is reach out and get the link sent to your email. We have the, well, Fiesta in the Square going on the thirtieth of September from three p.m. to seven. This is in honor of celebrating Hispanic and Latino Heritage Month. The mayor's Latino Advisory Council and ELLA, which is the Erie Latino Leadership Association, are going to be hosting that, so if you want specific details on what activities will be available for children, I definitely recommend that you all reach out to them, because I have had quite a few people reach out to me, asking me, and I only know the basic details of the car show, the vendors, and the competition, so if we could get a little bit more details on what kid activities would be going on, that would be lovely. And then, as I work with individuals with intellectual disabilities and autism out in the community daily, I see Vnet is slowly but surely, you know, expanding their work. If your neighborhood needs to have Vnet connected, I recommend that you go online and put your house on the waiting list so that they know that there's someone in that neighborhood who would like to have access, and possibly get your neighbors to also register to be on the waiting list as well. The sooner we can get the map expanded throughout the whole city of Erie, the better for everyone to be connected. And then, we also have, actually, I think that might be all. I look forward to the renters ordinance and the pedestrian ordinance actually being done this year, 'cause they're two things that I have been collectively working to get done, so, thank you, that is all.
Ms. Flores, question, will there be any music at the...
I was told that there's going to be a DJ and live performers. I just wasn't sure who, or when, or what time things start. I was given a very vague description, so once I know more details, that would be nice, too, so I can share that information, but I do know that there's, they said there was gonna be a dance competition, so I'm assuming different genres of music, bachata, sason, salsa, and maybe cumbia. I mean, those are known Spanish dances, but I honestly don't know all the details.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would also like to congratulate Mr. Witherspoon on successful Spoons League. Nothing particularly to report today, just that I'm observing and reading and analyzing all the potential ordinances that are in the queue, and when they're ready, they'll be presented, and for the good of the order.
All right. Couple things I had in the last two weeks, and everyone in council had the study session last Thursday to review the rules of council. There's a couple other events. Met with the chamber about what our upcoming slate was of priorities for the rest of the year. We had the governor in town, along with our congressman, for ribbon cutting with the Bayfront Highway, and pretty soon, our nation will be two hundred and fifty years old. There was an event to talk about some of the festivities that'll be coming up as twenty-two twenty-six approaches. I think for the last couple months, we've had, pretty much since Chris, we've had a kind of an easy end of the summer here as a council, so I wanna give you an update on the ordinances that we're looking at in the next, for my last three months here as president. First, you've already heard from Susanna about the tenants. She's also looking to update towing and parking. The, what's that called? The committee, the... Board, yeah, review board, thank you, sorry. Words are slipping. As Jasmine mentioned, pedestrian access. We had the study session regarding rules of council that we're looking to update. There's gonna be some, look at the games of chance that are happening throughout the city. Mike, or Councilman Keys and Councilman Trup, sorry, I think I called all you by your first names through all of that. My friends up here next to me, a couple of these, Mr. Keys and Mr. Trup are looking to put something more codified with street dedications, and we are looking at the chickens with some feedback. We do currently have that prohibited. It is ordinance seven twenty-nine point fifteen. It prohibits farm animals in the city. That is currently completely not allowed. As Mr. Witherspoon had mentioned earlier, you said between two hundred and fifty and four hundred pound chickens. You know that, right?
Are they ducks?
Man, that's one of those things back in my day.
It went over your head. I was talking about the two-legged chicken that walked around with us.
Oh, man, yeah, four hundred pound chicken would go over my head. Hopefully not through, anyways. But let me state, currently, the fines for that are no less than one hundred dollars and as much as three hundred dollars. What we are looking at is regulating it a little, you know, how much space do we put in a coop? How much space is there in a pen? How far away from other properties? Everything being well-contained. No roosters, 'cause like we were pointing out, they make noise all day. Bees, there's a number of different things. And then we'll vote on it. No promises to anyone. We hear so much from citizens and the public, and there is, we, we control the budget and legislation, that's our roles on council, and there is so much that we cannot fix. And we do a lot of that outside of this role, or maybe in this role, but outside of our abilities in this office. abilities in this office, but I want to, yeah, I don't know how mu, I don't know what else I can really say about that, but it's, we hear your plates. We are attempting to do the best that we can within the powers of this office to address those, and oftentimes, we will step outside of those roles and take on further burdens. But I don't want to, I don't want to overpromise and under-deliver. I will deliver what is deliverable when you bring your concerns forward.
What we can legally do, because we have solicitors who advise us constantly.
Yes.
What we can and cannot do.
Thanks.
Hey, President Rock, by the way, congratulations. You're going to get your, your light, your red light over on Cranberry. You can take the rocks away now.
I took them away as soon as the press left that one. Yeah, we're getting that light here in a couple, that is, if you want the timeline, that's exactly how long it takes to get it done.
Much needed. You can take the rocks away, too, right?
Yeah. Hey, and my last thing, you know, we talked about a couple different personal things we're all working on. Porch Fest is September thirtieth. Throughout the West Bayfront neighborhood, there's going to be two dozen bands, a little less than, I think it's twenty-one bands, starting at noon, four or five bands, all the way until one big grand finale. The city trolley's there. We'll have food in Gridley Park. That's just a personal thing I work on in the neighborhood. Been doing that for four years now. So come on out and enjoy some free live music put on by the sponsors that we recruited. That's everything I have. Mr. Solicitor?
No remarks.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a couple things real quick. First of all, I really appreciate all the work you're all doing, and I look forward to working with you for the next thirty months and even beyond that, with most of you, to continue to move Erie forward. Thanks very much for that. I attended the citizenship ceremony last Friday, the fifteenth. We sworn about thirty-five new Americans at that, and it was a very, they always put me on a high every month I go to it. On the fourteenth, the tenth annual St. Mary's Follies happened. It's a great event, very, very enjoyable. Also, last week, I attended Gary Sinise's performance. I think some of you were there as well, and that was very, very moving as well. On September twelfth, I attended the quarterly A M. meeting of the Erie Community College, and it's now been in, been doing this for three years, and they're making very good progress, and they should, hopefully, within the next year or two, they get the recognition they need to continue to move forward. On September eighteenth this week, we threw in a graduation for the Paramount team. They're relatively new, and we've been supportive of them. They graduated fifteen graduates. They were almost all either women or people of color. I think out of the fifteen, there were four white men, but it was very moving, and it's a great group. Trish De La Godo is the co-founder and president of that, and she does the same thing in Pittsburgh, and she started up here, and she actually bought a home up here with her husband, so we were very happy with that. And last, but least, we were approached by representatives of the Sarah Reid Senior Living, that's over at two twenty-seven West Twenty-Second Street. They built a park across the street, across Twenty-Second Street, from, you know, their apartments, and mostly people in their eighties that live there, and they want a safer way to get people across the street. They have to cross like right in the middle of the street, so it's hard to put something in. We're going to do another study, or they're going to do another study for us and get that information to us, and we really hope to be able to help them to get their residents across the street for parties at this park. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Oh, Mr. Witherspoon? Okay. I didn't tell council, but I want to thank the citizens who made phone calls to me as well as emails and texts, wishing my son well, who spent two and a half days in ICU at UPMC, and let them know that they moved him into a regular room today, and that's all good news. Thank you for your prayers.
Thanks for the update. Now, we hope everything goes well.
Mr. Brzezinski?
Yeah, just quickly, I always think, we get emails every now and then where the Human Resources Department says, welcome, Murzky, or that's the last name I remember seeing. Why don't we have them come to our morning meetings? As long as they're here, let's meet these people. You know, back in the day, when you saw, it's nobody's fault that City Hall is not open to what it used to be, but we don't know all these new people that are coming in. It'd be nice to see a face. Just a thought.
For the good of the order.
Well, you know.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? All right, meeting adjourned.
City council adjourns at eight forty-seven P M. Mr. Nelson, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Faulkner, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.